If everybody's okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Welcome, everybody. Thanks to all the commissioners for joining us. First, on our order of business is the approval of minutes for March 20th, 2020. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Thank you, Terry. Is there a second?
I'll second it, Jeff.
Okay, who was first? Randy first? I have a first and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye with names. Aye, Jeff?
Aye, Wayne.
Court Management.
Thank you. Alright, is that all five of us?
Aye, Randy, yeah.
Yeah, alright. Next on the agenda, Commissioner Reports and Comments. Court, you asked me if you could go first.
Yes, Jeff, thank you. Just had two things that I wanted to get taken care of, that's alright. Sorry, there's some background talking, but first, I would like to ask for a consensus for a letter to be written to the Governor asking for complete control of the reopening of Washington County, with the leadership of our local health department, emergency management, and our hospital system.
We need to have, somebody's got a dog in the back, we need to have that.
Can we please mute unless you're speaking?
Okay, Court, would you begin it over, because it was very...
That's fine. I would like to ask for a consensus for a letter to be written to the Governor asking for complete control of the reopening of Washington County, with the leadership of our local health department, emergency management, and our hospital system. I know that we can safely and more efficiently open Washington County. The last three weeks, I've asked about youth camps opening on June 15th. I've contacted the state and talked to our local health officials. I know, and they know, we can safely do this, but without local leaderships, the camps have no direction. Over the weekend, I know I've been contacted, as I am sure all of you have also been contacted, by many businesses asking what they can and cannot do. They have reached out to the health department, and sometimes the directors from the states, the state has been unclear. We cannot allow our businesses and citizens to flounder without direction. I have many examples of other businesses that want to open and can't, don't have a timeframe when they can open, don't understand why their business is not allowed, but others are. They are all willing to abide by safety measures, they just need to know what they are and be tailored to their businesses. With local control, we, the commissioners, with the expertise of the health department, emergency management, and hospital system can open up Washington County safely and efficiently. So I ask for consensus to write a letter to the Governor asking for total control of opening up Washington County.
Are you waiting on a consensus? Court, are you gonna move on to the next one?
I'm waiting on a consensus.
I'll speak. I agree completely. What I won't do is go rogue without violating an executive order, but I will definitely support a letter, and I'll definitely, I definitely would insist on, if we went rogue, we didn't have any backup from health department or emergency management. So I would definitely follow the lead if the Governor grants us permission to do this, with advice and guidance from emergency management and local health departments, Earl and Tom Brown, and whoever their team is with them. So I think it's, there's a safe way to do it. I'll leave it to the experts what that way is to do it. I wanna get people back to work. I heard from numerous peoples this week, you know, Mr. Jimmy at White Tiger Martial Arts. No reason that I've known, I've known them for quite a while. They do a great community service. I think they could come up with a plan, I think they already have, how to operate safely as an exercise, and it's a program especially catering to the youth. But again, I would insist on the Governor's permission with guidance from the health department. That's any way we can get our guidance with the Governor's permission from the health department and emergency services. But I'm on board with that, if that's the way, if it turns out the way I just said it.
Hi, this is Commissioner Wayne Kiefer speaking. I also support a letter to the Governor in some form or fashion. I also have a letter prepared that maybe we could, you know, discuss what's important to each commissioner based on what we've heard from our constituents. I've also heard from constituents over the past two months, and I know we all have, of how disruptive their lives have been, and I certainly don't want to fault the precautionary measures that were taken early on, but I'm so very glad that some of those numbers and figures have turned out to be overestimates. I think we do, I've seen, I've seen for myself, citizens are being responsible when they're in the stores, when they're shopping. It doesn't make sense that some stores are open and others are not. I would like to also, I would fully support drafting a letter asking that some of those decisions can be made locally, if not all. I'd like to also remind our group, our commissioners, that I'm pretty sure, I know for sure, we serve as the Board of Health also in Washington County. We sometimes transition from time to time from Board of County Commissioners to the Board of Health. Maybe we can seek our only advice through our county attorney, Kirk, to see what authority that already entails to us. And we also have our health, community health advisory committee that was reconstituted about a year or two ago. And maybe we can use them for guidance as well and help to put forth some good measures. So, yes, absolutely, I agree. I have a letter that I would like to share with our commissioners later on, and I won't read it, it's a bit too lengthy, but absolutely, I agree. Let's make that request to the Governor.
This is Terry. I think all three of you have made outstanding contributions in providing a letter to the Governor to get our community back in business. As we all know, there's many businesses out there suffering tremendously. They need to get back in business as soon as possible. And I guess my only question was, and I can't remember how you ordered it at the beginning, Court, but, so we're going to be requesting and asking the Governor to let us take control and get our businesses back in business here in Washington County? It's not gonna be a demand-type letter, correct?
I don't think, I don't think we can demand it. I would strongly ask for this.
Yeah, that's all I, I just, I didn't remember if I heard the word, how it was presented, or how you mentioned it there at the beginning, but no, yeah, just...
Ask for complete control of reopening.
Oh, no, I agree with it. I agree with it. I think we need to get moving forward as soon as possible, and I'd also make sure we be mindful of the comments that Commissioner Wagner had made concerning the health department and the EOC.
Well, yes, and that's what I'm asking is, so complete control of reopening Washington County with the leadership of our local health department, emergency management, and our hospital system.
As long as the Governor's okay with that, yes. Okay, no more comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff, are you still in?
Hello, Jeff?
Randy, go ahead.
I might have to, I'll walk down.
I'm unmuted now. Can you hear me?
Yep, thank you.
Alright, I too support a letter to the Governor requesting more local regional control by the county commissioners here in Washington County. I think we know best, with the guidance of our EOC and health department and the hospital, I think we can open up business for Washington County based on those statistics. Regional control is important, that we know our people best. I think I've seen a lot of evidence of people exercising control and restraint and responding to all the rules. It's important that we get our economy up and running before the cure becomes worse than the pandemic. So I would suggest that we get some information to our county administrator and legal team to form a draft letter for the commissioners to review and edit, and get that out as promptly as possible. So therefore, I, you have my consensus to move forward. Any other commissioners officially?
Commissioner Wayne Kiefer here again. Again, I support a letter.
Thank you.
It's clear that, you know, if a business chooses not to reopen, that's their prerogative. If someone chooses not to venture out into commerce, that's their prerogative. We're not mandating that anyone participate in an activity. They personally feel uncomfortable. But we know it's disrupting lives, and I would agree wholeheartedly.
Personal choice, defending our civil liberties. That's two consensus. Court, Randy, Terry, okay?
Yep, Court, I'm definitely for it.
Okay, everybody did, Jeff. Alright, I'm just summing it up, making sure we have it for the record. Now, Court, you said you had another item?
Yes, secondly, I would like to ask for a consensus again, that we start meeting in person again, and as soon as possible, and as soon as possible, open it up for citizen participation, again, with the health department's guidance.
Yeah, yeah, I'm good with that. Or I've been in here for two months waiting for that, but I think we did tread easy on that and took the high road, you know, to protect everybody. So, yeah, but I do agree, it's time, and I think all the commissioners are actually here today. We're just in different rooms on this teleconference, so.
Alright, any other commissioners in support of that? I guess start the 26th?
With our next meeting.
Okay. And everybody okay with doing that? We'll assign staff to help us set up all the social distancing and how we would do it for the 26th. Is that okay?
Court Management, I'm good.
Randy Wagner, I'm good.
Terry, Wayne?
Terry's good. The only thing I'm watching on is on the mandate that the EOC and health department have to be involved or be part of, unless the Governor or...
We'll go, we'll use the social distancing and all the other guidance from the EOC to help us arrange that meeting to be set up. How's that sound?
I'm good with that, Randy.
Okay, I'm okay.
Yeah, I'm okay with that one too. I'll come up with the other, for the Governor, sorry.
Alright, Court, do you have anything else in comments?
That's it for now, thank you.
Vice President Baker, would you have any comments?
I have a few. Again, I'd just like to give a special thanks to our EOC, our health department, Meredith Hospital, everyone involved with providing that state.
Alright, hey, good meeting this morning.
We've got some people who aren't...
Commissioner Klein?
We have muted, everyone. If you're gonna speak, please unmute yourself, but other than that, please keep yourself on mute. There's a lot of echo in the background.
Okay, this is Commissioner Baker. Should I continue with Commissioner comments?
I can hear you good, Terry, yeah.
You're okay, Commissioner Klein?
Terry, there were a lot of, it was really hard to hear you. Why don't you start over, please?
Okay, is Commissioner Klein on?
Yes, sir. Please continue.
Okay. Commissioner comments. Again, I'd just like to give a special thanks to our EOC team, our health department, Meredith, everyone involved with this COVID-19 ordeal, providing us great feedback, great information, and my hats are really off to them. I couldn't even begin to understand or do what they do with all of this information, and then trying to digest it and get the information back to the citizens and the commissioners. I just wanna thank them, and they're just on an awesome job, our health department, EOC, Meredith, et cetera. Also, we've kind of alluded a little bit about businesses getting back open, and I would really like, I know we're all eager to get our businesses back up and running, but I would really like to thank Delegate Bill Wivel. I think he deserves a special thank you, because his forward-thinking with the letter of support that he asked us all to be supportive of three counties, of the western three counties, was just a really forward-thinking move on Bill Wivel's part. And I believe out of that, and I don't think they worked and tried to do, bring the whole state together, but I think in the Governor's comments, I think he alluded to, I believe he said that there were eight jurisdictions, worked the state up into eight jurisdictions with us being one of them, obviously, Western Maryland. And so other counties and other communities and delegates and leaders were trying to do the same thing for their districts. So hats off to Bill Wivel for doing an awesome job employing all of, everybody together and getting our senators, our delegates, all of our county commissioners, elected bodies throughout the western three counties. So thanks to Bill Wivel for those efforts. I was gonna get into thanking the Governor for giving the county some latitude, but the Court's kind of touched that with the resolution, their letter that we're gonna be sending to them. The other thing that's gonna be of concern to me, and this is just me, I'm not speaking for any county commissioners, just gonna be some of my thoughts as we move forward on the budget process. We have citizens out there that are gonna be needing a lot, a lot of help. Businesses are gonna be needing a lot of help. So I know once we start moving forward with approving the budget, it's gonna be difficult for me to support a water sewer rate increase, and I know they're gonna tell, you know, they're gonna be needed and so forth, but it's gonna be really difficult for me to be adding any new cost onto all of our citizens, because, you know, expenses are growing and growing, and I think through this pandemic, many of our citizens are gonna be losing their jobs, their income's gonna be less, and I'm gonna be doing my best to try to figure out a way to help cut their costs to government. And I'm gonna continue to stand for what I've always stood for, and that's less government and lower taxes and fees and so forth. So I know we're gonna have a difficult time deciding on how we're gonna move forward with this year's budget, but there are just gonna be some of my positions when it comes time to support a budget. Thank you. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, Terry. Wayne, would you go next?
Yes, Commissioner Kiefer here. I have a few things I'd like to share. One, I was able to listen in to our budget hearing, one of the, on our YouTube channel. I would like to thank county staff for putting that together. Obviously, it's always best to have a public budget hearing with a live audience, but given the circumstance, we couldn't do that. So thanks to our staff for preparing the information, and also our staff who assembled the video. I really enjoy the videos that we can produce, you know, here in-house. I think they're very informative, and that was another good video, so thanks to staff for doing that. I'd just like to echo what Commissioner Baker said, you know, as elected leaders, we're often asked to make decisions on areas that we are not experts on. We often have to rely on our staff, on experts in the community, and that certainly includes our emergency services division employees, volunteer fire and rescue employees, our local hospital and medical professionals there, and our health department. So thanks to them for the service that they're providing to us. We play that delegate balancing act, it's with information that we get and listening directly to citizen concerns. I'm stopped in the grocery store every time I've been going these last few months with questions and concerns and listening to the fears of citizens. So hopefully, this letter that we're suggesting, asking the Governor to allow us to reopen, will do exactly what we need to do, is help ease the concerns of our citizens and get that process started. I'd also like to make mention, one of, you know, we've heard, I've personally heard, and I'm sure we all have, just a variety of situations and concerns from our citizens, things that, you know, I'm sure weren't, couldn't all be thought about when a close down or lockdown began. And one of the issues was the issuance of marriage license. That couldn't be done during the shutdown, because the courthouses were closed, and there's some activity that can take place at a courthouse. I think land sales can be reported and deeds can, but marriage license couldn't be issued, and that impacted a couple of citizens who reached out to me. And just to be clear, the people getting married didn't reach out to me, their family members, their parents, asking for help and what could be done. And I'd like to thank, I have a list of people here I would like to thank, because last week, last Thursday or Friday, the Governor did issue an executive order allowing marriage certificates to be applied for online. Payment could be mailed in, and a video could be taken with the proper official and the wedding couple. And I've reached out to some of our local delegation, Delegate Quarterman and Senator Sarafini, who also had some constituent concerns regarding the same issue that they were contacted by. They helped to the extent that they could, and didn't seem like we were getting much of anywhere. So I turned to some contacts that I had politically. Colin Cummings was one of the Governor's Western Maryland campaign aides. He now works for the Governor's office. I had reached out to him. I'd reached out to our local Chairman of the Republican Party, Jerry DeWolf, to see what contacts he may have, and he was able to put me into contact with the Chairman of the Republican Party, who was having a meeting very shortly with the Governor. Dirk Hare is Chairman of the Maryland Republican Party, and another senator not representing our district, Senator Justin Reedy, who also had some concerns, and they were able to share with the Governor and get a plan forward. So it's interesting to see all of the different concerns, you know, certainly economic concerns are a priority for many. There's a lot of other concerns out there that needed to be addressed, that weren't maybe well thought out or weren't even considered, couldn't be, in the short notice that the closure took place. So I'd just like to thank those individuals for working, and the Governor, of course, for making those decisions to allow marriage licenses to be issued. I think that marriage is certainly something that's essential in our society, so thank you for that. That's the end of my comments. Thank you.
Commissioner Baker, just wanna make a comment, add to Wayne's comment on applying for marriage license. I've actually had two calls on register of wheels, estate. Families have lost their loved ones, and they're not even able to get an appointment with the register of wheels so that they can get some, an account in place, so they can pay for some funeral services and so forth. And I just wanted to let you know that I've had comments or calls on register of wheels also through the pandemic, and just when you mentioned about marriage certificate, that made me think of the register of wheels. So there's others that are having some difficulties also. Thank you.
Well, Commissioner Baker, this is Commissioner Kiefer again. I would like to propose, it's not something that we need to do right now, but as we start preparing our list of items for the legislative session, list of requests, that maybe we work with our delegation. Now that we've been through this exercise, unfortunately, we know there's many things that are essential, and maybe we can develop a list of ways and procedures that if, you know, something even more severe were to happen, how we can have essential government business continue remotely if need be. Marriage licenses being one example, but, and as you mentioned as well. So I would like to work with our delegation as they ramp up for the next legislative cycle to see what we can do.
Alright, thank you, Randy Wagner.
Good morning. Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, I also want to give my heartfelt thanks to everybody. I've literally wore through COVID-19, I've wore out some of our emergency service people, Tom Brown. Undoubtedly, I get, you know, 20 emails or 20 calls a week or more on what can we do and what we can. I go right to Tom Brown and through Earl. Earl and Tom have done a fantastic job. I think they've stayed in tune with this as best as they can with the ever-changing landscape of it. And I won't belabor this with what Court said in the beginning, but, you know, I feel the pain, because, you know, my own business has suffered dramatically through this. So I feel everybody's pain. I probably won't, you know, restaurants and all of them, it's just, it's just a terrible thing. So I guess I don't have to elaborate on that anymore. And the county, I want to thank the county for doing their part. We're down at least 50 employees we haven't hired. We're working essential, hiring only essential employees with emergency services or dispatch center 911. So I wanna thank the directors, I wanna thank everybody who's stepped up and kept the county operating, you know. We can't get down too far, because when there's that storm and a tree's laying across the road, we still need people to get that tree off the road, or water main breaks, or whatever could happen, you know, the unforeseen, again. You know, and we get beat up, all the commissioners get beat up, we get beat up on social media. You know, it goes with the territory. People just don't know really all the facts. I mean, they can, obviously, I wouldn't discount their opinions by any means, but there's a lot of facts that, that it would be, and they're welcome to call me, and my number is easy to find, and instead of blasting it on social media, it's like, I see constantly that the county raised their property taxes, well, we didn't raise property taxes. And I see that constantly on social media, that they raised the property taxes. What Terry remark on water and sewer? I would, and this is a bad time, I'd certainly entertain listening to the CFO and our powers to be here, and see if they have any solutions to that. I know that there's more to it than just don't do it, but I would definitely entertain listening to that. And I agree with Commissioner Baker, it's a bad time to be putting any more money on the citizens. You know, there's probably people that don't know where their next meal's coming from, if they're not getting any benefits from the government, and they've been out of work. People can't make their house payments, you know, all the deals sound pretty good, but I don't think they're all as good as what they're painted to be in some cases. So there's people I've talked to that haven't got a nickel, you know. It's just, it's just something we need to work through and continue working through, and I'll surely do my part to cooperate and try to make things a little better and easier. I just, you know, we just don't have the crystal ball when all this is gonna go away. But anyway, that's what I have.
Alright, thank you, Randy. I too wanna praise Earl Stoner and Tom Brown. They probably regret the day they gave me their phone number, but they've been essential as a point of contact for me, answering questions for the numerous businesses on how they can or cannot open. And Earl and Tom have been very important in supplying some of the information that can allow some of these businesses to open. I do wanna thank everybody who put the budget together under these pandemic conditions. It's important to have that information out there. In regards to water and sewer rates, I would have to yield to Sarah, the water and sewer funds are enterprise funds, meaning they have to be self-sufficient. If we don't raise the rates, then do we have to go to the general fund dollars, which means every taxpayer would be paying for the rate payer. So I'm gonna ask for Sarah maybe to provide a solution and response to Mr. Baker and Randy Wagner's request. I too have been besieged by a lot of people with phone calls and about their business. I think we're doing a good job by offering this letter to be out there to allow us to do the local control based on our statistics. We can't continue. We gotta open America and Maryland and Washington County to go back to normal, not the new normal. We need our businesses open and running and providing jobs and opportunity for all. And I believe from everything I observe, Washington County residents are up to that task. One of the things I'd like in our pre-legislative session coming up later this year with the delegation is we need some type of language or law that, and all due respect to Governor Hogan, that any additional time of emergency, past 30 days, would have to come under approval of the legislature. I think the original intent of the emergency alert or declaration was for floods, and remember, South County about two years ago, snowstorms, hurricanes. So I think it would be appropriate suggestion to ask our delegation to submit legislation that anything after 30 days, the General Assembly would have to agree and be vote on that. One of the other things I'd like to bring up, I think there is a lawsuit out there challenging the Governor on shelter in place, so that's one of the things that the citizens need to know, that that's being done, and from what I heard on the news this morning, several of the state courts have ruled against the Governors in the shelter in place. So again, I'd like to wait and see the results on that. I'm anxious to hear that. And again, I think the letter and all of us agreeing to a consensus to move forward that shows our citizens that we are standing up for them and trying to get Washington County back to normal. And that concludes my report. Next, I'd like to go to reports from county staff. Please introduce yourself and the matter.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is Jeremy Moes, Director of the Division of Environmental Management. If it's okay with the Commissioners, I would like to follow up in more detail to questions related to the water and sewer rates from last Tuesday's rate discussion. In response to the question on when the allocation fees and allocation fees for water and sewer were last raised, in 2016, both the water and sewer allocation fees were raised. The sewer connection fee was raised from $5,900 to $6,900. The sewer connection fee was raised from $5,900 to $6,900 and the water connection fee was raised from $1,950 to $2,500. Revenue fluctuates related to these fees from year to year based on development. For example, in 2019, the county generated $256,000 in total connection fees. However, in 2018, we generated $1 million in connection fees. Additionally, the $1,000 fee referenced in the meeting from last week was for a development fee in a specific area, which is over and above the regular connection fee. Finally, related to the Morgansville sewer rate discussion, the city charges a quarterly meter fee along with the volume charge to Morgansville residents, which adds an additional element to the comparison of county collections and the customers and county full-service customers. When comparing the base and volume charges alone, Morgansville residents pay less when based on an average of 12,000 gallons used. However, because the city adds a meter fee to their bill in the amount of $33, Morgansville area residents pay approximately $20 more per quarter than the average county sewer customer. Once the capacity manager, management project is complete, the Morgansville residents will be full-service county customers and their total bill is projected to be lower because the county will be treating their sewer and they will no longer be receiving fees from the, or excuse me, no longer be receiving fees from Heggers Town. Thank you. Do the Commissioners have any questions regarding that?
Thank you, Jeremy. Okay, ahead.
Yes, this is Commissioner Manischmidt. What I, my big concern last week, and it's still my concern, and I, again, I agree with Commissioner Baker and Commissioner Wagner, this is probably the wrong time to do a water and sewer rate, but we've also have to understand that these are enterprise funds. But my big concern is I do not see how we can put a three and a half percent increase on just one part of it. I think if we look at the whole thing and raise it a lower percentage, we can still get the same dollars, like the, the non-metered sewer charge, you know, if we're raising the metered sewer charge, we should be raising the non-metered charges. Those are the things that I, that I'm looking at is I, I don't think it's fair to raise one without all of them. So just wanted to make that a point. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? If not, next staff person, introduce yourself in the matter.
Jeff, this is Kirk.
Go ahead, Kirk.
I've just got a couple of things. I know the Commissioners and the county have received a lot of emails from citizens and businesses requesting that the county allow them to reopen. I just wanted to remind the citizenry, as we have discussed, that the county government closed no business. That was a function of the governor's executive order. And because the county closed no business, it doesn't have any authority to allow any business to open up unless the governor says that that's okay. So I just want to remind the citizens of that. Obviously, that's why the Commissioners have taken the step to ask for more control. But I just wanted to make clear that the Commissioners understand the desire for economic activity and for businesses to get back to normal, but they don't have the authority to permit that as a county at this point. Second, as you know, some additional amenities are coming back online, particularly at our, our parks as the governor allows a gradual reopening. Want to remind people that the gathering restrictions are still in place. You can't have groups larger than 10 at any one place and that people should continue to practice social distancing even, even when they are participating at our parks. And finally, just want to remind everyone, the budget comments are due by 6:00 PM on May 21st. That's Thursday by 6:00 PM. Thank you, that's all.
Kirk, this is Commissioner Kiefer. If you could, you or your staff, could you forward to us what our responsibilities are as, when we convene as Board of Health, what latitude we have? Is it just financial decisions or just what does that entail? Not right now, of course, but when you have time.
Yeah, we'll be glad to do that. Thank you.
All right. Any other staff?
This is Sarah Greaves. Can you hear me, Commissioner Klein?
Yes, Sarah.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I tried to chime in earlier after Jeremy, but I realized I was still muted. Sarah Greaves, Chief Financial Officer, just wanted to add a clarifying statement to what Commissioner Manischmidt said about the non-metered accounts. And as represented last Tuesday, originally it was stated by Director Moes that there was a 0% increase, but that that was an error and there was actually supposed to be a 3.5% increase. So we did correct that for the record and the accompanying, accompanying documents. Wow, that's hard to say this morning. Anyway, I just wanted to clarify that. I also wanted to say that our office and certainly the Department of Water Quality does understand it's a difficult time for our citizens, you know, and I assure you that we have looked at our own operation and reduced where possible as evidenced by the list of changes that Director Moes represented last week during the budget conversation. You know, and certainly we did that prior to bringing the proposed rate increase before you. In our opinion, rates must be increased in order to get back to a self-supported status. We see the evidence of that just by looking at how much of a gap there is between our expenditures and our revenues in both the water and sewer funds. Just in the sewer fund alone, 1.4 million dollar gap between the two. And so as we move forward, you know, I would urge the Commissioners to move forward with the proposed rate increase and limit the impact to rate payers rather than all taxpayers. As Commissioner Klein said, it is correct. If we divert funding acquired from the proposed rate increase to the general fund, all taxpayers will be supporting the enterprise fund. And that was a large contentious issue last year. And as a reminder, using the average of 12,000 gallons per quarter, each three and a half percent rate increase costs approximately $6 per quarter to our users. And finally, incremental increases over a period of time has been the existing plan to get the water and sewer funds to a self-supported status, and it would be my recommendation to move forward with that. And that concludes my comment. Thank you.
I have a question for Sarah.
Sure.
This is Randy. Just hypothetically, and I'm not advocating, this is just a question. If you say it should be done to be self, and I think you said last week within about three years, it would be self-supportive of itself possibly, is that, is that correct or am I, did I misunderstand something?
Yes, sir, that's correct as opposed to the sewer fund.
Just for the sake of argument, what if you didn't this year and just prolonged that an extra year by doing it another year instead of a year that, that we're in the middle of a pandemic? Just a question, would that, what impact would that have? Would it just put it on the tail end of a, of a year longer it takes to get self-sufficient? Or is that something you would recommend or extremely, or really discourage doing that?
Based on current projections, that is what, what our projection shows, you know, about a three-year timeline. If in that period of time, we need to request a loan from the general fund, I'm speaking in terms of that the water quality fund will need a loan from the general fund, that is probably going to happen in fiscal year 2022. And then hopefully by fiscal year 2023, we'll be in a position where we won't need a loan and we won't need to, we won't need a loan, but we will need to think about paying back the loan if we had already acquired one. And so, you know, as we, if we have a loan, then we have more expenditures because we're going to have to figure out a plan to pay that back. So in short, I think there are several options, you know, but the faster that we can get these funds in a self-supported status, the better financially the county will be. The rating agencies also look at these enterprise funds and their self-supported status. As long as there is any support coming from the general fund, whether it be an appropriation within the budget or even a potential loan, that counts against us in the eyes of the rating agencies because they're not self-supported. And so I would advocate for the increase. If the Commissioners wanted to push the increase to another year, the options would be that it would have to be made up with, the deficit would have to be made up with a general fund appropriation or a loan from the general fund in the, in the meantime.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions for Sarah? Hearing none. Next staff member.
Morning Commissioners, this is Leslie Hart. Can you hear me?
Hi, Leslie.
Good morning. Leslie Hart, Washington County Department of Business Development. Just wanted to remind everyone that the Boonsboro Farmers Market is this evening, that's Tuesday, located in the Boonsboro community. They are practicing social distancing and everyone is asked to wear masks and gloves. And they allow 10 people at a time into the market. So you line up and go through and as people buy and leave, then they allow more people into the market. And then tomorrow is the Elks Farmers Market located out on Robinwood Drive, and that starts at 3 o'clock. That's the first night for the, that particular farmer's market. It is a producers-only market and they are ready to go. Lots of people are planning on attending and that market runs four to, three to six, excuse me. And then finally, the Washington County Farm Bureau is proud again, and I had mentioned this last week, but they will be giving away free milk on Saturday, May the 23rd, from 10:00 AM until 2:00 PM or until the milk runs out. And that location is 123 West Franklin Street. And anyone who drives up in their car will receive one free gallon of milk and anyone who walks up will receive one gallon of milk until supplies last. And I can tell you that the Farm Bureau is very honored and privileged to be doing this program and they do have several more coming. So look for more information about free milk giveaways in the future. And thank you Commissioners for your time.
Thank you, Leslie. Hey, what time is the farmer's market tonight? I missed it.
Starts at 4 o'clock. It runs 4 o'clock to 7:00 PM.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Leslie, this is Kirk. Was there a letter you needed to request support?
Yeah, for the $500,000 grant for the garden.
Yes, that's correct. I had, I had requested that last week. I didn't know if you needed me to reiterate my request formally this week, just looking for letter of support.
Have you sent us, you sent us a copy of that, correct?
Yeah, Krista Hart has that information, I believe.
Yeah, while you have the Commissioners on the line, have all of you looked at that letter and want a consensus to move forward with Leslie's request?
Leslie, why don't you explain it briefly, please, just for the record for anybody who may be listening?
Thank you.
Absolutely. So there are multiple partners involved in this USDA grant request. It is Goodwill Horizon, Community Action Council, Commission on Aging, Washington County Food Council, BFF, which is a mobile farm market. Meritus is a collaborator on this project as well. And it is to create, first of all, a community garden that will be growing local product, vegetable, fruits. We will backfill from local vegetable and farm, vegetable and fruit farmers until the program is completely up and running. But those local fruits and vegetables will then be placed into multiple areas, but one of those is a nonprofit community garden to be located somewhere in the core of Heggers Town. That will be operated by Goodwill Horizon. And that nonprofit market will bring more local fruits and vegetables to people who live in the Heggers Town community that is considered a food desert, meaning they do not have walk access to grocery stores or places that they can walk to get groceries. So this is a really neat concept. There is also a food pharmacy program that will come in conjunction with the community garden that will look at people that are at risk of high blood pressure, diabetes and obesity, and they will be encouraged to receive fruits and vegetables from the community garden free of charge. So this is a huge undertaking, lots of partners and collaborators, and we're very excited to submit the grant. Community Action Council will be the one managing and orchestrating the grant, but of course I'll be helping on the ag side of things. The letter request is simply saying that you support this initiative. There is no financial responsibility to the county whatsoever.
Thank you, Leslie. Commissioners, any thoughts, consensus to support the letter?
I'm good, Jeff, Randy.
Well, Manischmidt, I'm good. Excellent idea.
Terry is good. Wayne is good.
Yeah, I'm okay. Thank you, Leslie. Full support. Thanks again.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. Have a great day.
You're welcome. Any other staff to give a report? How about Krista?
No, sir, I have nothing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything from legal? All right. Okay, thank you. Next, let's move on to our next agenda item, FY20 Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding Program. Cody Miller and Stephanie, are you with us?
Here, President Klein, can you hear me?
Stephanie, yes. Anybody, please introduce yourself in the matter.
Cody Miller with the Washington County Sheriff's Office.
Thank you, Cody.
Okay.
Please proceed.
Senior Grant Manager, Office of Grant Management.
Okay, please introduce the matter.
Okay. The Washington County Sheriff's Office would like approval to apply to the FY20 Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding Program. The funding program allows for states, tribes and local governments to support a broad range of activities to prevent, prepare for and respond to the coronavirus. allowable projects and purchases include, but are not limited to, overtime, equipment including law enforcement and medical personal protective equipment, supplies such as gloves, masks, sanitizer, training, travel expenses when it is related to the distribution of resources and addressing the medical needs of inmates in the local detention center. The Sheriff's Office is projecting $20,000 in overtime covering salary fringe and benefits as well as designating $35,015 for equipment. The grant performance period is for two years and reoccurring expenses are not expected. Matching funds or in-kind support is not required. There are no unusual conditions or requirements attached to the acceptance of the grant.
Commissioners, comments, thoughts? Motion to approve?
Well, Manischmidt, I motion to approve the submission of the grant application.
Commissioner Kiefer, I second.
First and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye by name. Aye, Jeff?
Aye, Terry.
Aye, Wayne.
All right, motion, thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Stephanie.
You're welcome. Next up, public hearing, FY20 Community Development Block Grant. Stephanie, you're back up with Brooke Grossman.
Yes, thank you. Again, I'm Stephanie Leopold, Senior Grant Manager with the Office of Grant Management. And hopefully on the line also is Brooke Grossman, Chief Missions Officer with Horizon Goodwill Industries.
I am on the line. Oh, sorry.
Hi, Brooke.
Hi, guys.
Good morning.
We are seeking a motion to approve a resolution of support authorizing the submission of the county's application for fiscal year 20, Community Development Block Grant funding on behalf of Horizon Goodwill Industries, requesting $100,000 for program activities and $5,000 program income reuse for county administrative expenses and to accept funding as awarded. Washington County must provide a public hearing for the purpose of obtaining citizens' views before submission of an application to the Community Development Block Grant Program. Horizon Goodwill Industries has requested that the county submit an application on their behalf. Local governments are required applicants on CDBG applications. The Department of Housing and Community Development has given the county permission to utilize $5,000 of CDBG program income on hand for administrative expenses. During state fiscal year 2020, the state of Maryland received an award of $7,778,516 and a portion of this funding is being utilized for COVID-19 activities. The state provides CDBG funds for eligible projects based on meeting one of three national objectives. One is to benefit persons of low and moderate income. Two, for prevention of elimination of slum or blight. And three is to meet an urgent need that is an immediate threat to community health, safety or community health, safety or welfare. During state fiscal year 2020, additional requests are being received for public service activities related specifically to COVID-19 prevention, preparation and response for the homeless population. If approved today, the county will submit an application requesting funds to be used to offer overnight shelter, I'm sorry, overnight emergency shelter to 10 of the most vulnerable persons on the coordinated entry list as identified by the Continuum of Care Shelter Coordinators, as well as evening and overnight shelter staffing, shelter supplies, twice daily shelter cleaning, staff and participant personal protective equipment, full-time case management services for one year to support the projected increase in need as a result of the COVID-19 crisis, and emergency hotel stays when necessary. The grant application is available for viewing on Washington County's website at www.washco-md.net and it can be located on the homepage towards the bottom under Documents for Public Viewing or can be found on the Grant Management homepage. The grant will provide up to $100,000 for Horizon Goodwill Industries and the Washington County Office of Grant Management will utilize up to $5,000 of CDBG program income for the cost of administering and monitoring the grant. This public hearing is a bit different due to the direction provided by the Department of Housing and Community Development. The last day for public comment was to be submitted yesterday, Monday, May 18th. The public was provided seven days prior to the meeting to provide comment for consideration. No comments were received. The county attorney's office has the application and resolution for signature. Are there any questions?
No questions for me, Commissioners? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
This is Court Minus Schmidt, I motion to approve the resolution.
Present it, okay, is there a second?
Commissioner Wayne.
This is Randy, I second.
Okay, who is the second?
Wayne Kiefer.
Wayne Kiefer, second, first and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye by name, Jeff, aye?
Terry, aye.
Wayne, aye.
Who else?
Court, Court Minus Schmidt, aye.
Randy, aye.
All right, thank you folks very much, thank you.
Thank you.
You're up, you're welcome. Next up, Maryland Agricultural Land Preservation Foundation Recertification Report Approval, Chris Boggs, please introduce yourself in the matter.
Good morning Commissioners, Chris Boggs, Land Preservation Planner here for Washington County Department of Planning and Zoning. Yes, this is the recertification report for the Maryland Ag Land Preservation Foundation. Every three years, we're required to compile this report, which they call a checklist, that updates the state Maryland Department of Planning and the Maryland Agricultural Land Preservation Foundation on the land preservation numbers, how they relate to our comprehensive plan and how they relate to our agricultural plans in the county and of course statewide. And so every three years, we're required to produce this report in order to retain our certification. So being a certified county in the state, some counties are certified, some are not, means, but if you are a certified county, that means you retain 75% of the state ag transfer tax that is collected by the state. If you are not a certified county, you only receive 33% or 1/3 of the state ag transfer tax that is collected. So you can see there's a, there can be a significant benefit to being a certified county and namely because that is generally the funding that we use for our 60/40 match mechanism for the Maryland Ag Land Preservation Foundation easement program. So, you know, they match the 60% portion, we match the 40% portion, and we usually take our 40% out of that portion, that comes from our state ag transfer tax. So what the state asks for is for us to compile the checklist, give them some spreadsheets and maps of numbers and locations of easements and things like that. And then we need Commissioner approval for the checklist, as well as planning commission and ag board approval, which both of those we already have. So, any questions thus far?
Commissioners, questions for Chris? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve as suggested.
This is Randy, I approve as suggested, motion to approve.
Commissioner Wayne Kiefer, I second, Commissioner Wayne.
Thank you, have a first and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor to approve, say aye by name, aye Jeff?
Aye Randy.
Aye Court Minus Schmidt.
Aye Terry.
Is that four, is that five? Thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty. Next agenda item FY21 Healthy Families Home Visiting Grant, Allison, and Allison, you're up.
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
Allison Hartsorn, Grant Manager, Office of Grant Management. This morning, I'm seeking approval to submit the grant application to the Maryland State Department of Education in the amount of $277,993 and accept funding as awarded. The Washington County Office of Grant Management on behalf and in the direction, at the direction of the local management board is seeking approval to submit the fiscal year 2021 Healthy Families Home Visiting Grant Application to the Maryland State Department of Education. The Healthy Families Home Visiting Program is a comprehensive program modeled after the initiative Healthy Families America. The goal of this program is to prevent child maltreatment through early intervention, promote healthy growth, development and strengthening of the parent and child relationship. The Washington County Health Department is the vendor contracted to provide this service. Funding in the amount of $6,606 is included in the award for county administrative support. No county funds are involved in this award. Do you have any questions?
Commissioners, questions? Hearing none, motion to approve?
Commissioner Wayne Kiefer, I make a motion to approve the grant application.
Yes, thank you.
Court Minus Schmidt, second. Court Minus Schmidt, second.
First and second in, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye by name?
Aye Randy.
Aye Court Minus Schmidt.
Aye Wayne.
Aye Jeff. Okay, everybody else, is that all five? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Contract Award PUR1460 Local Care Team Coordinator Rick Curry and Allison, please introduce yourself in the matter.
Rick Curry, Director of Purchasing, can you hear me?
Yeah, a little louder maybe, thank you.
Okay, Allison, you still on?
I'm still here.
Thank you.
Okay. Recommended motion is to award the contract for the Local Care Team Coordinator in Washington County to the responsible proposer with the responsive proposal Praxis Access LLC of Heggers Town in amount of $49,000. The purpose of this service is to fulfill the requirements of the Community Partnership Agreement for fiscal year 2020 with the Governor's Office for Children. The awarded funds for a local care team coordinator shall commence upon receipt of a fully executed contract between the Board of County Commissioners and the awarded vendor. The awarded contract shall expire on June 30th, 2020 with an option to renew up to two consecutive one-year periods through 2022. And also you can see in the RFP, it mentions it lists the members who served on the coordinated committee and who evaluated proposal and agreed that the proposal was deemed to be moved forward and made for recommendation. Also, you can see where the RFP was advertised in local newspaper on the county's website and the state of Maryland's e-marketplace website. Notice also was mailed to individuals on the Office of Grant Management's email list, there were 16 persons or firms who accessed the RFP document from the website. And also there was one proposer or provider who was present on the pre-proposal conference. And the fiscal impact, which is funded from the Governor's Office in amount of $49,000, concurrences from the coordinated committee. And also Commissioners have a scopol work of the excerpt of the RFP document that shows what the vendor will be doing for these services. And that concludes my recommendation for the award of Local Care Team Coordinator. Are there any questions?
Commissioners, any questions? If not, entertain a motion to approve the award.
This is Court Minus Schmidt, I move to award the contract to Local Care Team Coordinator in Washington County.
Okay, I have a first, is there a second?
Randy, I'll second it.
All right, I have a first and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, say aye by name?
Aye Wayne Kiefer.
Terry, aye. Court, aye. Jeff, aye. Anybody else?
Randy, aye.
Who else? Is that four, five? All right, that looks like to be five votes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next up, Contract Award PUR1467 Stop Loss Insurance Coverage, Rick Curry, Rachel Brown, please introduce yourself in the matter.
Again, Rick Curry, Director of Purchasing, Rachel, are you on?
Yes, Rachel Brown, Director of Human Resources.
Also, is CBiz representatives on the line?
That's correct, Liz Lobston.
Okay, recommended motion is to award a contract for stop loss insurance to responsive proposer, Sun Life Financial of Wesley Hills, Massachusetts, who is also the incumbent, who submitted a total annual premium for option one of $1,039,993.8 with specific services, stop loss services for $175,000 per claimant. The request proposal was advertised on the state of Maryland's website, also on the county's website, local newspaper, and also the ad of direct mail was sent to 12 potential providers of the insurance who had to submit the proposals by the deadline of April 24th, which we did receive 12. The fiscal impact of the budget for health insurance and stop laws for fiscal 21 is in excess of $16 million. The concurrence is with recommendation for concurrence of the Director of Health and Human Services. Also, the Commissioners have a attached summary of CBiz's proposal of order services, which I will turn over to CBiz to go through their PDF slides and explain the services.
Correct, Liz Lobston, and I also have myself and Becky Lewis, Becky, are you on? Okay. Well, we'll just run through the presentation, I'm on the first page where it's Request for Proposal Analysis and Recommendations by CBiz Employee Service Organization. As Mr. Curry said, we released purchase order number 1467 on April the 7th with a return date of April the 24th. And then with stop loss, we need to affirm those numbers up and by May 8th, we did have firm numbers from our vendors. Washington County has health insurance through Aetna and Aetna's Care Management Programs and then your prescription drug coverage is with CVS Caremark. The stop loss is currently with Sun Life today and it has always been on an annual basis. Not sure how your page numbers run, but I'm on page three. Medical vendor have been effective since 7/1 of 2016 and then the CVS Caremark is on 7/119. Stop loss carriers, look closely at who your vendors are, so we just want to point those out, that that's part of the process. The stop loss policies are insurance that protects the plan from a significant claim cost associated with an individual member and as well as the group in an aggregate. These policies never automatically renew every year at the same rate because your claim population, your member health changes every year. So we have to look at that every year to make sure we get the best price. This year, we used a third-party type administrator called Benefit Mall and has been brought into the stop loss marketing process. And we get better leveraging on bids utilizing this company. It comes at no cost to the Commissioners, it's just part of a value add that CBiz provides. Rick already mentioned the vendors that submitted bids, but we just make sure that we keep track of who's submitting and why they're not, you know, submitting a bid, so we can just make sure we're keeping, you know, control of the process. Now move to page five. And this page shows your current vendor in a column and then the renewal and then options. Of course, there's always options. You can increase your stop loss level, there's just numerous things that you can do to help, you know, reduce your monthly cost for the stop loss program, but you also want to make sure that you're looking at your risks. I'm going to just move to our recommendation, I know that you'll be able to flip back and forth wire at home to see what we are recommending, but I'm going to move to page seven. And our recommendation is to remain with Sun Life at your current spec level. But we want you to move to a option one, which is adding into your plan a no new laser, meaning next year, Sun Life would not be able to laser any of your members going into plan year or fiscal year 2022, that's a long ways off, and a 50% rate cap. We're recommending this because it's going to be advantageous to you in fiscal year 22. That laser or any of potential 50% rate cap is your risk. Each year, you have claimants that are, you know, above your spec level, you receive some dollars back from that spec level and that's why you have, that's why you have stop loss insurance. We have seen growing in the community just an increase to spend for specialty drug. Currently, your spend is 30% of your drug spend is for a specialty drug and we look for that to even increase more as innovation is increasing advancement in science, we're just coming up with better and better drugs that can, you know, cure and save people, but it comes at an extreme cost. That is our recommendation, option one.
This is Court Minus Schmidt, I'm looking at the charts and under specific contract on the current and renewal, it says paid, but under all the options, they say 2412, what does that mean?
That's so that you don't have a hole or a space of time where there isn't any coverage when you move to a different vendor. So today, you've been with Sun Life for so long that, you know, there isn't any, any time that a claim wouldn't be paid by Sun Life, but if you would move to Anthem, you have a tail inside your claims and the Sun Life needs to keep paying those claims or somebody else needs to pick them up. So then they do a crossover, they'll pull in the claim occurring today, you would happen to move to 7/1, there's a tail and that new company would pay that tail.
Okay, so is that for? Okay, so is that for twenty-four days, twelve days? That's what I'm trying to figure out.
Months. I'm sorry, very sorry. That's twenty.
Okay.
Good question.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions? Staff, any other input? Hearing none. I believe there is a recommended motion. Is there any other comments?
Yeah, this is Court Management again. So the difference between option six and option one really is the no laser and then the fifty percent rate cap. Because option six, as we can see, is lower, but we're putting at risk a year away of a much higher increase.
That, this is Liz from Cbiz. That is correct. Aetna did provide a decent quote. However, it does not have that recommended no new laser and a fifty percent rate cap. Our client base today, I've had three clients that are had to invoke the fifty percent rate cap this year, which is a lot, obviously, when you talk about half the cost, right? So when we got through this marketing and we saw that, you know, Sun Life came in under our expected budget number that we placed in the projection, it was like, will be a great year to no new laser and the fifty percent rate cap.
This is Rachel Brown as well, just to add into the comments that Liz shared. We had a lot of discussion at the committee, and with everything going on currently with the COVID pandemic and not knowing exactly what situations we may be seeing in our member group with conditions or long-term lasting effects, we also thought this would be a good year for us to consider the no new laser and the rate cap to prevent or minimize the amount of risk that we're maintaining if we do see ongoing situations from the COVID situation with our health conditions.
Perfect. Thank you. This is Court Management. I move to stay with Sun Life with option one with no new laser and a fifty percent rate cap.
I have a first. Is there a second?
This is Randy. I'll second that.
Okay, first and second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, motion to awards, say aye by name.
Aye, Court Mina Schmidt.
Aye, Wayne Kiefer.
Aye, Randy.
Randy and Wayne, Terry?
Aye, Terry Baker.
Aye, Jeff Klein, five. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, county commissioners of Washington County Public Improvement Bonds of twenty twenty and refunding bonds of twenty twenty. Lindsay Raider and Sarah, please introduce yourself.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is Sarah Greaves, Chief Financial Officer, and I believe Lindsay Raider, Bond Counsel, is on the line. Lindsay, are you there?
I am. This is Lindsay Raider, Thunkin Bolton, Bond Counsel to the county.
Thank you, Lindsay. As we move into this conversation, Commissioners, I'd just like to remind you that these resolutions are for the bonds that were voted on in the fiscal year twenty twenty budget last May. And with that being said, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Lindsay for commentary.
Good morning. This, you have a resolution before you providing for the issuance by the county of two series of general obligation bonds this year. The first series is the Public Improvement Bonds of twenty twenty, and they are essentially new money bonds to be issued to finance certain infrastructure, public facilities, environmental and educational projects. Also this year, we are looking to have the county issue the refunding bonds of twenty twenty, and proceeds of those bonds, if issued, will be applied to currently refund in whole or in part the county's outstanding taxable Build America Bonds Direct Payment Series twenty-ten B, which are first subject to redemption on July one, twenty twenty. Last year, you'll recall, we only issued one series of new money bonds. So this is a little bit different this year since we're contemplating both a series of new money bonds and a series of refunding bonds. But the resolution, except to the extent it has provisions regarding the refunding bonds, is very similar to last year's resolutions. The Public Improvement Bonds will be issued in an original aggregate principal amount not to exceed fifteen million, three hundred, thirty-five thousand dollars. The resolution before you assumes an original aggregate principal amount of refunding bonds in of nine million, five hundred, five thousand dollars, which was based on then-current market conditions at the time this resolution was submitted to the county for your packages for today. However, the resolution provides that ultimately the refunding bonds can be issued in a maximum original aggregate principal amount of eleven million, five hundred thousand dollars. That upsized amount is just to take into consideration any major market swings between now and the time that we price these bonds. The resolution has a lot of standard provisions regarding the process for the bond sale. The form of the bonds is an exhibit to the resolution, or excuse me, is within the body of the resolution. Exhibits to the resolution include a list of the potential refunded twenty-ten B bonds, the form summary NOS, which we will need to have published in the local newspaper before the sale date, and the form of notice of redemption for the refunded bonds is Exhibit C. As in past years, the commissioners delegate to the Chief Financial Officer the authority both prior to and upon the sale of the bonds to make adjustments to the amortization schedules that are laid out in the resolution to account for market conditions, the premiums that are received by the successful bidders for the bonds, and tax and other considerations. Two things that are slightly different this year, the board decided that for certain environmental projects, the amortization schedule for the Public Improvement Bonds relating to those particular projects could be on an up to thirty-year basis within limitations of legislation authorizing the bonds. Also, the county is waiting to hear whether the Maryland Water Quality Financing Administration is able to provide loan funding for two of the environmental projects that are contemplated. And if we find before the sale that water quality is able to provide such loan funding, the amount of the Public Improvement Bonds as issued and sold will be reduced to take those out of the projects being financed from these Public Improvement Bonds, and we will be coming back to at a later date with authorizing legislation for those two projects to be financed through the Maryland Water Quality Financing Administration. And if water quality provides those loans, those loans will also be evidenced by general obligation bonds issued by the county to the Maryland Water Quality Financing Administration. Manufacturers and Traders Trust Company will serve as the bond register and pain agent for the bonds as it has in the past. The Arbitrage Group has been selected to serve as the verification consultant, assuming that the market stays steady enough that it makes sense from a financial standpoint for the county to refund the twenty-ten B bonds in whole or in part as we near the bond sale. Currently, the bond sale is scheduled for June ninth and closing for June twenty-third, but authority is delegated to the Chief Financial Officer to postpone and reschedule those sale and closing dates in the event the market moves the wrong way. The resolution provides for the pledge of the full faith and credit and unlimited taxing power to payment of the bonds. We anticipate that both bonds, the interest on both series of bonds will be tax exempt for federal and state income tax purposes, and necessary covenants regarding the federal tax exempt nature of the bonds are contained within the resolution. The resolution provides that if the refunding bonds are issued, that the twenty-ten B bonds selected for refunding will be redeemed no later than forty-five days after the twenty-twenty refunding bonds are issued. And that is a general overview. I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Staff, any more comments?
I would just like to thank Lindsay Raider for coming online today and making the presentation. She always does a great job. I'd like to thank my staff for all the work that they have in this. And if there are no other questions, if there are no questions from the Commissioners, I think that concludes the presentation today. And we would ask for you to consider the recommended motion.
Okay. Commissioners, any more thoughts, comments? Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
This is Court Management. I move to approve.
Okay, I have a first. Is there a second to approve the motion, resolution?
Commissioner Wayne Kiefer, aye, second.
Thank you, Wayne. I have a first and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I call for a vote to approve. Say aye by name.
Aye, Court Management.
Who's next? Thank you. Who's next?
Good morning, Commissioners. This is Susan Small.
Hold on, we haven't finished. I have a first and a second.
I think you got everybody, Jeff. I think everybody answered.
I probably missed some because I couldn't hear. All right, that's a five-o vote. Thank you very much, Lindsay and Sarah. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, the review of the draft of Washington County and City of Hickastown COVID-nineteen. Susan Small, you're up. Thank you very much.
Sure. Good morning, everyone. I just want to today review the draft of our Washington County and City of Hickastown Small Business Emergency Relief Grant Fund. I don't have a recommendation necessarily to vote for you. We're not announcing or opening the application process to the business community at this time, rather, this is just for review of the draft. At this point, to the COVID-nineteen plan, the Hickastown Department of Community and Economic Development, along with Washington County's Department of Business Development, has been actively engaged in the operations center stakeholders in the Emergency Support Function eighteen, and we are now transitioning into the Recovery Support Function two for economic recovery. As we do that, we're taking a look at the new CARES Act, which has recently been approved by the federal government, and it's been established to assist county and municipal governments offset expenses incurred in their response to COVID-nineteen. The Washington County government has been allotted thirteen million, one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, four hundred and forty-three dollars for non-public health-related response activities to the COVID-nineteen crisis. So again, the purpose of today's discussion is to review and gather comments of the Washington County and City of Hickastown Small Business Emergency Relief Fund Grant. Just to give you kind of a general overview, our department, as well as the city's Department of Economic Development, has been in partnership with several other stakeholders in the community to take a look at how to utilize this funding in the CARES Act. We've called it the Business Stabilization Program, and we have a proposed funding amount of eight-point-nine million, just over eight-point-nine million. The program will be a grant or loan program created to help local employers sustain operations, stabilize economic unemployment by retaining employees, paying their vendors utilities, rent or mortgage, and address any unforeseen reduction in production, consumer demand, and unbudgeted or unknown costs associated with the new way of operating under the COVID regulations. Generally, we're intending to distribute funds based on eligibility associated with specific industries or associated with thresholds such as employee count, excuse me, time in business, and a requirement to be in good standing. The task force that's been putting this together has created the draft, which was attached for you, with a program description, the application and guidelines, and we are still actively working on the efficiency and administration of the program. The portal or electronic acceptance of documents is still under investigation. I do have Josh available from Information Systems as well. He and I have been in regular communication, looking at different programs to make this a very smooth process. So as we move forward, today, we're just seeking approval. Jill Thompson is also on the line from the Department of Community and Economic Development from the city. So we're looking to just approve the concept and a specific level of detail that we're presenting today to allow the city and the county and the attorneys to move forward or to make any necessary edits so that we can finalize the documents. That way, when the funding becomes available, it will allow us to quickly, in order to implement the program when we've received the final guidelines from the federal government.
Susan, Kirk. Susan, do you mean you just want a consensus to move forward with this or not a motion? Kirk, what's your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I mean, I'll defer to Kirk, but I believe that's what we're asking to do.
A motion or a consensus?
I'm sorry, a consensus.
Okay. Kirk, is that appropriate?
It is appropriate. We can't, well, I mean, really, you can do it either way. Obviously, the city is going to be looking at this as well because they're a partner in the EOC, and this is a collaborative effort. And they're going to be looking at that at their meeting today, I believe.
All right, Commissioners, your pleasure, consensus or a motion?
This is Commissioner Kiefer. I have some questions if I could ask.
Fair enough.
The couple here, I'm sorry. The first question is, I know with the federal funding for similar purposes to help businesses, there were some issues with getting funding to the people. Who are the individuals that will make these calls as to who qualifies, who doesn't? Could you remind me of that?
Well, we haven't quite gotten that far in terms of actually naming which position will, or if there'll be a steering or a committee to decide that. That's part of what we're still coordinating. However, the grants typically would get processed first come, first served, and there will be some obligations of the businesses to provide us with some of their either revenue year-over-year so we can see details of the loss and be able to make a good faith effort to get back to business as usual using this money.
Okay, I just want to be, you know, I would be careful, and I'd like to know more information when people decide. You know, I'm certainly glad the City of Hickastown is involved in this. They're a big player, obviously, in Washington County. I just want to make sure some of the businesses in our outline communities would also be included. And the other question I have, the list of ineligible applicants. I have personal, you know, I'm personally in agreement with some of these as well, but home-based businesses. I know some home-based businesses that employ people, and, you know, why would a home-based business not be in a tattoo business? I have no tattoos on my body, but we also have some nationally renowned tattoo artists, and, you know, that's certainly a legitimate business. I just want to, you know, government picking winners and losers there is a big theme for me all the time, especially during some of the lockdowns and what businesses have been forced to close and which can remain open. Is that our call, or is that part of the CARES Act that makes that call on which businesses can't be included?
So I'll answer it in two parts. So I appreciate the feedback because, you know, this is a great way for us. So we generally took a mechanism that was already sort of placed for some of the incentive programs and then customized it to this program. However, there's going to be things that we can alter, and this is one, your comments based on home-based businesses and tattoo businesses and the like will definitely take that into consideration. That's why I wanted to have this conversation. The second, you know, we The second, you know, we we're willing to certainly take a look at any of the businesses and not, we don't want to make those decisions, but we have not received all of the federal guidelines yet in terms of what they may or may not require or eligible or ineligible. We're not a hundred percent certain on what those guidelines will be. So generally, we'll make, I've made notes here. So as we receive those, I would be happy to bring you an update.
Thanks, Susan.
Yep.
Thank you. So you're still asking for consensus or a motion? Commissioners, what's your choice?
Hold on, this is Court Management. I got another quick question on this. Under the eligibility, business must demonstrate financial stress or disrupted operations, may include but are not limited to notice of inability to make rent or loan payment due to reduced sales, income, suspended operations. I I understand on the bottom, it says other circumstances subject to review on a case by case basis. But I don't want to be stuck on just the businesses that are, you know, behind. If a business is dipped into their savings to continue operations and continue paying or also, you know, I I don't want them to be ineligible because they might have been working on, you know, saving up to to have an expansion. And then now they've dipped in their savings to try to run everything appropriately. So I don't want them to be excluded from this because they they did have substantial savings that they've lost revenue, but maybe aren't late yet on their payments.
Yeah, yeah, there's, um, it's it's tough to make one eligible use so specific when there could be certain scenarios that could alter it just slightly. And we know that generally, loss of revenue is is not an eligible. They they can't apply because of lost revenue. However, it can, you can apply for an, you know, an inability to be able to pay certain things or vendors or that or staff or rent. So I know what you're saying. And again, we'll we'll try and maybe alter that wording a little bit. So it it's a little bit more inclusive and not so specific to that. Again, Jill's on the line with me, and she and I have been working through this. So all these comments are really good feedback.
Yeah. Well, I guess I'm scared of two things. One, a business saying, hey, if I need to be late on a red rent payment, so I get this letter, then, okay, I'm going to miss my payment for a month and you guys will give me money. Or two is, or is the to the guy that's, you know what, I'm paying right now, but in two months, I'm not going to be able to. We want to make sure that they're taken care of also.
Right, okay.
That's it. And I'm fine with it, you know, I'll make a consensus that I think this is a great starting point.
All right, is that a motion or a consensus?
I I think consensus is at this point, but I think it's a great starting point and to continue moving forward with this.
I agree with the consensus. I agree with the consensus. Just a few odd tweaks mainly, and, you know, who makes up that group? Because I know I'm going to receive calls if a business is ineligible or, you know, something happens. Not that I anticipate it will happen.
All right, Terry, Randy, consensus here on my behalf.
Randy's consensus.
Terry, you okay?
Terry's okay with consensus.
All right, there we go. Thank you, Susan.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Commissioners, next, need a motion to go into closed session?
This is Court Management, I make a motion to go in closed session.
Is there a second?
Wayne Kiefer, I second.
All right, first and second, any further discussion? If not, say aye by name?
Aye, Terry.
Aye, Jeff.
Aye, Court Management. Aye, Randy.
Aye, Wayne.
Thank you. Let's take a five minute break and we'll convene in closed session. Thank you, everyone.